Good evening. The School Committee Business Session of December 9, 2024 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio?
Here.
Member Donovan?
Here.
Member Keegan?
Here.
Member Maxwell? Member Maxwell? Member Chevilia?
Here.
Member Willett?
Yeah.
Mayor Borogod?
Here. So, all members are technically present. Member Maxwell is remotely via Zoom. Although she wasn't able to respond to the roll call, I see that she is present, so any...
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Member Maxwell. Any votes that we take tonight, we'll have to do through a roll call. So at this point, we need a motion and a second to accept the agenda for December 9, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Willett, second from the Vice Chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote, roll call?
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Chevilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borogod?
Yes. So, the agenda has been accepted. Superintendent, would you please introduce our student for tonight's flag salute?
I'd love to. So I'd like to call up Rebecca Gordon, Principal of the Marsh Grammar School, and Connor Keating.
I am proud to present tonight's Marsh Star Student Connor Keating to the flag salute. And very special, because I don't usually get to present these. This is what Connor's teacher, Mrs. Labrie, has to say about Connor. He is the first to come to mind to nominate for the flag salute. He always stands for the pledge, takes off his hat as he recites the pledge. He even comments to others that they may want to take off their hats as a sign of respect. Ms. Labrie also noticed that he showed the same respect at the beginning of our Booster Fun Run when they played the National Anthem and recited the Pledge of Allegiance. Connor is an excellent, well-rounded student. He is a hard worker and shows kindness to his classmates every single day. He goes out of his way to be kind, caring, empathetic to his peers. Connor has earned a number of points, safe, respectful, and responsible. Kids cash in their points for various awards and use these points to buy... and he uses these points to buy prizes for others. I am nominating Connor for his respect that he shows every single day during the pledge, his responsibility that he shows in the classroom, and his kindness that he spreads to his classmates. Connor's mom has this to say. Whether he is at home or out in the community, Connor is kind, loving, helpful, respectful. He sets a good example for his siblings, Jamison and Riley. Connor has been on skates since he was three years old, but he has been part of a hockey team for the past four years. He is a great hockey player and spends a lot of time in the rink. This past year, he played flag football for the first time, which he really enjoyed. He loves to read, learn about history, and keep up with current times. He definitely has a math brain and is quick to pick up on new math concepts. His new hobby is coin collecting. He also enjoys collecting hockey cards with his brother. Connor is a good friend. He could talk for hours, hours, and will talk to anyone that will... We are all in agreement that Connor is a star student. He always has a smart greeting in the morning and whenever anybody passes him through. We have all observed him offering to help a classmate and adults. He works hard to do well and helps others to do their best, whether in school, at home, or at the hockey rink. Connor is an impressive young man exemplifying safety, respect, and responsibility.
At this point, I'll invite the Superintendent to introduce our SOAR Award student.
Yes, I'd like to call up Roger Lenfest, our Department Head for Social Studies. And I would also like to call up Crystal Castro, our SOAR Award winner for tonight. And let me correct that. It's History and Social Sciences. I'm not sure why I said Social Studies. My apologies.
And for the record, I had Mr. Lenfest, I think sophomore year.
Oh, wow. And he's still 31.
I have the honor and extremely proud to announce Crystal Castro as our SOAR Award recipient. Crystal is a leader in and out of the classroom. During her four years at Methuen High School, Crystal excels in the classroom maintaining a 4.88 GPA in her History and Social Science courses and earning high qualifying scores in Advanced Placement in United States History and Advanced Placement in United States Government and Politics. Her teachers often speak of the kindness and caring she has for other students as much as they rave about her performance in their classroom. Crystal is committed to our community and challenges us to be better through her advocacy for equity and student rights. Crystal is helping others and improving their quality of life. She volunteers at Lawrence General Hospital, helping out in the mammography department...
I was so happy I said that correctly.
As a senior leader for our BIPOC student group, Crystal has led educational and informative meetings for her peers and our staff, as well as worked with the Asian Cultural Awareness Club, the Adopted Grandparent Club, and Methuen's ADADI Coordinator to organize community events such as the Lunch and Learn on African-Americans and the Art for the Black History Month held at Methuen City Hall. Crystal is the editor-in-chief for our school newspaper, The Blue and White, president of the National Honor Society, historian for our National Honor Society, and for the second year, our delegate to the Northeast Regional Student Advisory Council. Crystal has participated in Student Government Day, serving in the House of Representatives at the Massachusetts State House, and participated in the Law Day Speech Contest hosted by the Lawrence Bar Association. Her passion for biology and politics has inspired her to choose Biology in pre-med as a major and Political Sciences a minor when she intends college. She's interested in pursuing the intersection between social justice and biology, specifically how to better address disparities in our healthcare system. Crystal is currently working with Desi and other students from Regional Council to address some of the root causes for chronic absenteeism in schools.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to first thank my parents for always supporting me and encouraging me to take challenging history courses. And I'd also like to thank all of my history teachers, Ms. Garlic, Mr. Crips, Mr. Martelli, and Mr. Scammon, for making history a lot of fun and very engaging. And I'd lastly like to thank Mr. Lenfest for reaching out with opportunities and ways for me to engage in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Nice job. Mine? Yes, of course.
And now we're on to the introduction of the Patriots Penn Competitive Award winners.
Yes, I'd like to actually call up Ms. Rebecca Gordon to the podium. We have some guests with us today. Winners for our essay contests, both of them that are here tonight. We have three winners, and all three actually came from the Marsh Grammar School. Unfortunately, one couldn't be with us, but we'll have Ms. Gordon speak, we'll have our guests speak, and then we'll introduce the students and take some pictures with them as well.
Okay, that works. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, School Committee, thank you for allowing us here tonight. We've only got a few minutes of your time. Basically, we're here for more of an informational type thing. The VFW across the country holds two essay contests throughout the country. We're obligated to present these to students from our post in Methuen. By the way, my name is Guy Curtis. I'm the commander of the VFW in Methuen. With me has been... he's the quartermaster, and also John Sato, he's the House Committee Chairman. Anyways, the two contests, Patriot Penn, which is for grammar school kids, and the essay this year, the title which we asked them to write about was "My Voice in American Democracy." We had, I believe, eight essays that were turned in to us. Seven were from the Tanny Middle School, and four were from the Marsh Grammar School. All three winners were chosen by a committee of three individuals from the VFW. The three winners were all from the Marsh School. First and third from Mr. Bateman's class. The second winner from Christina Conlan's class. Their names are... The first winner, first place, was Quinn Minicucci. The second was Bradley J... The third, if I can get this right, Takwanda Tafuma was the third-place winner. We will be having an award ceremony at the VFW this coming Thursday. We'd like to present a formal invitation to the school committee, the teachers from the schools, and their parents. They will be reading their essays, and we'll have a little presentation. So you are 6:00 PM this Thursday at the VFW. We also had, just to make mention, a Voice of Democracy, which is for high school seniors. We didn't receive any from the town of Methuen, or city of Methuen, sorry. I don't know if it was made available, or there just wasn't any interest. So if we're in the future, we'd like to try to have maybe a designated person we could go to to make sure it gets onto the high school computers so that they're... it's available to them. Also, because in April or May, what we've done is we've started giving two $1,000 to school seniors going on to college. So we definitely would like to have... we'll be putting those applications out in January. That's something we're doing, not the VFW nationally. So when we can, we'd like to, you know, speak to someone about making sure we can get those into the school system. I believe that's all. Like I say, I hope to see you at the presentation on Thursday. It should be very good. Cake and coffee, so everybody is welcome. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
So we're not going to read our essays tonight. We're going to save that for Thursday, but we would like to formally recognize our third-place winner, Takunda. Come on up for your award. Winner Bradley Johnny Jean is not here tonight, but our first-place winner overall is Quinn Minicucci.
Next on the agenda is the update from our student representative. Do we have any updates?
I believe we have representatives here from Student Council.
Hello, everyone. My name is... Hello, every... Hello, everyone. Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Kenya Laviarunga, and I'm a sophomore at Methuen High School.
I'm Kayden Wen, junior in Methuen High School.
We're here to talk to you about some recent events that happened at Methuen High School. November 27th, we had a pep rally. The pep rally took place in the gymnasium, and the student body representatives gathered to decorate the area and corresponding to each grade level. Each grade completed in a series of events and games. Some of the activities were a balloon pop race, tug of war, turkey toss, and a half-court shot, and the seniors were the winners. November 25th, a power puff competition came on. It was... The freshmen won against the sophomores, and the freshmen won. The juniors went against the seniors, and the seniors won, and all teams had lots of fun and wore their team colors. Many students went on to cheer them.
This week, we had our winter sports. Basketball, cheer, indoor track and field, and we're really pushing to make sure that all students are aware of these sports and are participating. And then we had our Santa Parade, November 23rd, and many MHS clubs and activities have participated. And... money by selling peanuts for the Methuen Scholarship Foundation. Band, Color Guard, SAD, and NHS are just some of the MHS clubs that were represented. It went very well, even though it was cold, but MHS students loved it. And lastly, we had a key club and... started November 7th and ended November 26th, where both schools, school clubs, peer leaders, and key club held food drives to collect canned food and non-perishable items for people in need during the holiday season. And each group had placed labeled cardboard boxes inside of their designated areas or permitted classrooms. The outcome was a success, as many students and teachers participated in getting many goods.
Thank you for the update. Next on the agenda is public participation. We'll begin with the folks who signed up, and then we'll open it up to anyone else in the room who is interested in speaking. We'll begin with Nicole Pereira.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Maybe we just have Tayyab actually...
Oh, yes.
He does have something he wants to share.
I apologize.
I know we flipped those by accident today. Sorry about that.
I'm so sorry. Excuse me.
I think it's worth mentioning that on December 11th and December 12th, all DECA members will be traveling to Danvers for the district competition. Me and my partner, Thenzim, behind the cameras, were working diligently actually before this meeting, so wish us some luck on December 12th. Hopefully, we'll be placing for that. Additionally, I've been working diligently with Mr. Kuret to exploring the feasibility of various sustainability projects here at MHS. For example, recently, we kind of surveyed the exterior of MHS, and we're thinking of possibly a greenhouse, depending on the amount of student buy-in and teacher buy-in. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for the update, and I apologize. Nicole, participation?
There we go. Hi, everybody. My name is Nicole Pereira. I am speaking here again. I'm a mom of three boys that attend the Marsh, and I do want to preface this with saying that my children have and do love their experience at the Marsh. We love our PTO, our teachers, and there just are still some things that I'm concerned about and want to just touch base with. I know that we had somebody come in over Thanksgiving that checked several rooms for mold, and I believe that there were some air quality tests that were done, but I just went on the Massachusetts Governor's website, as well as the CDC website, and I just wanted to share some information that I learned that maybe we are not all familiar with. So I just wanted to put out there that the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health does not recommend routine air sampling for mold and damp building evaluations because air concentrations of molds or spores cannot be interpreted with regard to health risk, and they are highly variable over time. Instead, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health encourages detection by thorough visual inspections and detection via musty or moldy odors. I also wanted to share that they... Although inspections include an assessment for mold, the Department... although inspections include an assessment for mold, the Department of Public Health does not test for mold and does not recommend mold testing as part of routine water damage remediation. So I just know that there has been some moisture concerns at our schools. I don't feel, after reading the information that I read on the Governor's website and the CDC, that only doing air testing or observing certain classrooms is really enough to make me feel comfortable sending my child to school and knowing that there is no mold exposure. I feel like what would make me feel comfortable is, after reading what the state says is their protocol, is having a visual inspection of our school and just making sure that there's literally a checklist on what this inspection is supposed to look at in terms of checking for moisture, checking for humidity, what those and I feel like that information should be made available to us parents as well when that information and report does come in. And I, like I said, I just want to just make it a point to say that I would like to see an inspection of the school, not just certain classrooms and not just of the air. If we open a window, that can change literally the quality of so I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to just put out there that I am also the member of the Methuen CPAC, and right now I'm currently the only member. So if anyone is watching, I just wanted to share that over at the Marsh, we are working very closely with our PTO in terms of fostering inclusivity at all of our events and activities. And so if this is something that anyone listening wants to be a part of or learn or create that, that type of situation happening at your school and with your PTO, please contact me at methuencpac@gmail.com. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kara Blatt.
Sorry, thank you. Says that in 2022, there was a 4.2 million allocated to our schools. Recently, in 2024, it dropped to 1.03 million. That is shameful to us as educators and as our students to not be fairly treated, even though we are the largest city, we should be fairly inequitable funded. And we are losing the fight to keep and retain veteran staff, and we will not continue to hire qualified teachers if we continue with this pattern. Even today, the what was already published that only happened 10 minutes ago for negotiations that Mr. Shabalia knows from our other discussion with Ryan Hamilton, is that we are losing teachers to $20,000 over what we are paying our teachers now. And the district's proposal now, there's a four-year, not even three, doesn't even equate to make us equitable to retire, to retain our staff. It is not okay to keep on fracturing supporting us. That Student Opportunity Act was designed to help us, not for an excuse to pad free cash funds for an abundant of how the city funds their departments. We have taken time over time, hit after hit. We lost 41 members of our staff, while other city departments either kept their staffing or gained staffing. That is not okay. So we are looking to you, every city, we are still the lowest paid in the Merrimack Valley, and you, what you've given us is still going to make us that. We are looking for more cooperation and collaboration with the district to make our district better. Well, free cash and stabilization funds are the essence of making a sound city. It is not okay to pad it for 20 million, $18 million or more. Some of that money to fund our schools and still make your bond rating high. So we are looking to you to continue to work with us and fund our schools, because on social media, there's a lot of talk, but not a lot of action, and it's shameful for city officials to be publicizing what they are on social media and not backing up the people you were elected to do. Start funding our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan St. Germain.
Hello, Megan St. Germain. I'm a fifth grade teacher at the Tenny. I just wanted to be here today to, you know, personally ask you to invest in me as an educator, not just to support me as an educator, to invest in all of our students, not just to support them, because with investment becomes the return. With just support, it feels like a pat on the back in a pep rally, and we really need some investment here. We need to stop with the false promises of just that support and really back it up so that we can look to the future and tell our students that not only are you going to do great things, but we're going to be there for you to do those great things because we're going to stay in this district. Real investment tells a teacher that you are worth it. We want you here. You are valuable, and we're going to do everything we can to keep you here. So that's personal to me, because I want to be here, and so I'm asking you to invest in me. My colleagues and I, we invest all the time in our students. We invest our money, our time, and I know I've had a, you know, a personal family budget that and I still found a way to invest in my students, buying a laminator and a pencil sharpener and tissues. Goes on and on, so I'm not going to spend all my time. But we do that. Do I have to? No, I don't. I'm teaching about the rainforest, and I'm putting up birds and flowers and all these things. I don't have to, but I want them to feel it and live it as much as they can because they're worth it and they deserve it. But if I can't keep up, I can't keep up. So, you know, to invest in me, invest in them, and we have to do that. We have to do that. And I can only imagine if we all stopped, all of us educators stopped putting in that investment, what would it be like? And that is kind of how it feels. The city has kind of stopped. They're doing just enough, not putting in that extra. And again, I put in that extra because the kids are worth it. Not because I have it in my own budget at home. I don't. But I find a way to make it happen. I do the hard things. So again, while the students' needs have increased, the city has really gone stagnant in supporting those needs. They need you. The students need you to invest in them. Educators need you to invest in them. No more business as usual. Be the champions that we need, that these kids need. Educators and the students, the time is now to invest in our future for later. So I just ask you to do the hard things that I've been doing personally in my own budget, because support without investment just doesn't go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak, even if you haven't signed up previously? If not, at this point, we'll close public participation. If you can't make a future meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to Martha Siroyes at, and I'll pause briefly in a moment, but I'll just state for the record, M-A-S-I-R-O-I-S at methuen.k12.ma.us before 3:00 PM on the day before a school committee meeting. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to recess for, we'll say, maybe two minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member, we'll let the second from Member Shabelia to recess for two minutes. All those in favor, actually, you know, we have to take a roll call vote.
Member Dezoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Maxwell? Member Shabelia?
Yeah, she said yes.
Mayor Boragai?
Yes, we'll recess for two minutes. All right, we're back from our recess. We were alerted of issues with the audio during public participation. Believe that's being taken care of in the back room by our student volunteers, but nevertheless, this meeting will be posted online. So ultimately, it's important, of course, for everybody to be heard, and the intent is for that to be the case, especially once it's posted. At this point, we'll move on. Of minutes, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second from Vice Chair Keegan. Any discussion? We'll move on to the vote. Roll call.
Member Dezoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? She nodding yes. Member Maxwell? Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Mayor Boragai?
Yes. Those minutes are approved. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 25th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the Vice Chair, second from Member Shabelia. Discussion? No discussion. We'll vote with a roll call.
Member Dezoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Wille?
Yes.
Mayor Boragai?
Yes. Minutes have been approved for November 25th, 2024. We'll move on to staff reports. Superintendent, any updates from the committee?
I do not have any tonight.
Does the committee have any questions about the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services report? Member Wille?
Thank you. In terms of the outstanding cases from the summer, are those resolved, or are they still outstanding?
Nope, those are all resolved. That's reflective in the numbers. So there was only seven that are unresolved from October.
Okay. Excellent. And then is it unusual to have 17 at this late juncture of new arrivals for review?
No, they're, the 17 is anything that came in from November forward.
Is that a common practice to have it? Seventeen new kids in the system?
They're not necessarily new in the system. It's, residency concerns have been brought up about, about a student for a variety of reasons, whether it's returned male, somebody's reported it, or something's been said at school and it's been reported to us.
Okay. The cases referred to Student Services, is that part of that universe?
Yes, so that, that would fall, if there's anything relative to potential homeless situations, that comes to my office.
Okay. And then the Supreme Judicial Court decision talking about not parish ID, have we experienced any of those issues?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right. Just want to make sure on that. Okay. I appreciate the vigilance of the office. We are whittling down the list, and I know if we can just do have a window of 60 days max on it, and I ones from the summer have been resolved. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? If not, we'll move on. At this point, does the committee have any questions regarding the Director of Human Resources report? Any questions regarding the Facilities Report? Member Wille?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I definitely appreciate the comprehensive nature of the report. I want to applaud the mayor for sending in the Inspection Services. I also want to encourage any residents to read the Facilities Report, because beyond testing, actions were taken and actions are ongoing. We will work through these issues. A big person about prom resolution. I've always been an advocate for prom resolution as an elected official. I'm in favor of openness and transparency and accountability, and we're seeing that. I applaud the custodial staff and the Central Office. And again, I would encourage that had remaining concerns to reach out to me. The teachers that I've had a good rapport with, I've updated them on a personal basis. Some of the issues will require capital improvement, and they've been aware of it, but the dialogue still has to be encouraged from our constituents to the school committee and working through the Central Office. I know that the Superintendent and Mr. Goslin have been working through the ticket system and working in conjunction with the principals. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Stellar for having the Facilities Report. It's one, two, three, four pages long. It's online, and I would encourage anyone to review it, to check if there's any erroneous issues, anything that they want to counteract. And I have an open door policy. I will protect confidentiality, and I know that the mayor is working on the front lines of this. And again, it's something that in relationship and Inspeccional Services, I like the gung ho approach that we're doing. I appreciate the Central Office and what they're doing. And like I said, one of my mandates was to have the quarterly Facilities Report, and we've been doing that, but feel free to reach out to me anytime.
in the case of any expenditures that would deal with any particularly critical issues that need to be addressed now. So in terms of that as a funding source, I would imagine it's listed as being technically unknown simply because of the fact that it would require potentially City Council approval. And we haven't had any particular discussion at this time regarding doing that in particular for any specific projects. However, nevertheless, that is an option that I'm willing to exercise, if need be, for the health and well-being of our children and their teachers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, back at the Marsh too, I saw that there needs a replacement proximity for playground. Is there any way we could talk to possibly with Steve Angelo of possibly grants? Because I know there are playground grants statewide and federal as of right now. We should be tapping into those resources as well because as the spring comes and we take that down, those kids won't have a playground come the fall. So now that we know that there is an issue, we should be looking into possibly grants into that.
Great idea, we could certainly Lieutenant Angelo.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any other questions? Member Donovan, the member Willett?
Yeah, just really quickly. The ADA compliant ramp at the, on Branch Street, I can't remember, there's a ramp there now, right? Is that? Yeah, to the gym, sorry.
There's not, there, I mean, like
Okay.
A grade, but not a full ramp.
But, okay. And is that making it difficult for?
For some of our students
Yeah.
to access.
Okay, but, okay. So I'm glad to see that this is being addressed. Thank you.
We can have a second round, Member Willett?
I just want to make sure, like, most of the tests are coming back are negative. Is that correct? Because like, you know, I want to make sure that we're reported as a school committee as a whole. Report I've been receiving, the reports that I've been identified that come back negative.
So regarding, I'll just speak regarding the Marsh. We did some air quality testing on Black Friday, right after Thanksgiving. And that report initially has shown there to be normal measures of various types of mold or exactly, particulates in the air. However, we're going back to retest those spaces. And we actually have a follow-up meeting scheduled for this Friday at 1:00 with the Superintendent and then the Facilities Manager to review that report and discuss next steps. But those are underway still at this point this week.
And I think part of the compatibility of the mold issue and the environmental controls was the temperature gauges that needed to be, that team come back on that so that we're not too humid, we're not doing anything that would be conducive to those outside elements coming into our school system. Obviously, air filters, roof, I know you yourself are on the roof at the Marsh. You have the inspection team, you're working on a daily basis. So I just want to give the audience at home that this is not going to be something that to sweep under the rug. The legitimate concerns, and we're doing everything possible. But also realize that a lot of these tests are coming back negative. It's not, to my knowledge, wide spread. And anything that we see that is of concern, we are removing those, those elements. So we are being proactive beyond just testing. Would that be an accurate description?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we have heard concerns from parents, from teachers regarding these issues to the extent that I think any normal I don't want to say any mold is acceptable, but you know, anything that comes in with an industry determined safe standard, given the reports that we've received and the calls that the Health Department has gotten, I think it warrants the retest just to confirm.
And I, and again, I think this is a healthy thing of what we're doing, to be proactive on this. And also, I know when, when we go into the holiday break, there's going to be efforts as well on other factors that were presented to our attention. So the scope of the health and safety is paramount to everyone on this school committee.
Absolutely. And actually, the remediation piece is ongoing. And at this point, there have been extra efforts on the Superintendent's part to bring in custodial staff on the weekends to go through the list that the inspectors prepared for us. So we are proactively addressing not just the air quality issues, but also the other general cleanliness issues that are on those lists with the janitorial staff as well.
And there's no member on this school committee at any time that has refused a meeting or an email or a conversation or a site visit. Everyone, I can speak to Mr. DiZoglio, Mr. Shabelia, the Vice Chair, yourself, Mr. Chairman, my other colleagues, right? I know for a fact, we are active on a daily basis and we're getting these reports. And we're working in conjunction with your office as well as the Superintendent and Mr. Goslin, who could not be here this evening, and Mr. Stellar. So this is an ongoing thing. And I think, again, ultimately, we will work through these issues as a community, as we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Student representative?
I mentioned previously that I used to coach at the Marsh. And I expressed, I expressed concern of the state of the small gymnasium. Like, the flooring was quite damaged. And I don't seem to see it on the Facilities Report that has since been resolved or if it's currently being addressed.
Member DiZoglio?
It's being addressed for, during the holiday break because it has to be completely replaced. So that's already on the plan. I'm sorry that it's not here for you to see, but it was already in, in works, in, in planning to fix that.
Point of clarification, identified the cause of that, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So isolated incident from the bathroom next door
It was
with a flood or
Correct.
a plugged up drain pipe.
Yes.
Okay.
It was an unexpected water event. Yes. Not something that's ongoing.
So, and Member DiZoglio, then, Member Willett?
I was just going to clarify that we are doing it over the winter break. I just remember that from the last meeting.
Absolutely. Member Willett?
And again, some teachers from the tenny had approached me, and they had some concerns about the roofing, which I had brought back in January. The issues were not pertinent to the roof, it was masonry work. And it, there's going to be a cost factor to that. So I appreciate the mayor working, if need be, with the City Council on an emergency package because the masonry work will cost us probably about $60,000. But it has nothing to do with the membrane on the roof. There were upgrades to the roof at the tenny. This has to deal with masonry work. They did some windowsill work. And again, they've been there on the weekends overnight. And there's other things that down the line, we can discuss as a school committee of future courses of action. But again, it was something that was brought to my attention. I updated the people that submitted concerns to my attention. And again, I wanted to say for the record, I really appreciate the mayor stepping to the plate, if need be, with an emergency package. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? If not, we'll move on to the Out of School Suspensions and Other Disciplinary Actions Report. Any questions from the committee? Member Willett?
In terms of like the repeat offenses at the high school, are these like repeat, repeat offenses? Or do they get one time and then they, they committed it again, and so it's a repeat offense? These are not like multiple defiance. Because then, I think the pouch might be an option for those students on a trial basis. Something to look at. We had talked about that. We weren't going to do it system-wide. And I think that overall, it's been really working. And I think we've been ahead of the curve because the federal government is now encouraging school districts to adopt policies. Been ahead of the curve on it, but offenses, usually, I think it's coming from the high school. So maybe the pouch might be an option to explore down the line, just on those individual cases. But overall, I've been really pleased with the system.
Member Shabelia?
There's a question in there, but I don't think so. Yeah, I, I would have to look at the actual, like, those sixteen events to see what kind of repeated are they? Right, to see if there's, if they're repeated
Yeah, I think what it is, the grammar schools are very isolated. I think there's been like a little bit of a spike with the high school. Beyond, if it's, you know, one, you make a mistake and then you make another mistake. So that's a repeat offender.
Yeah.
If you're being defiant, and then maybe you get the pouch to target those individuals. But, you know, so far, you only get sixteen out of that universe is pretty good.
It is. Yeah, for four months, sixteen out of 2,000 is a pretty statistic right now, so we'll take it. But yes, I understand.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Member Shabelia?
So I had received a inquiry on the vaping. Incidents for vaping cannabis, six. Out of school suspension count, nine. How did we have six incidents that resulted in nine out of school suspensions? Or is that nine days?
No, so an incident, when a teacher administrator writes up an incident, they could tag more than one student in it. So it might have been one situation that involved
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
I'm particularly concerned about the criminal weapons infractions, especially at the grammar schools. I'm seeing it on the CGS in particular. And I don't really know what my question is, other than are weapons getting into the elementary schools? And what kind of weapons are we talking about? Are we talking about somebody brought a butter knife in and we're calling that a weapon? Or are we saying somebody's, you know, bringing something more serious in, right? Like, what, what does that look like?
It could be either but I would say to you that kids who are bringing in things that are serious weapons are likely no longer with us.
Okay, thank you.
However, they have to be defined a certain way for our discipline purposes. So that runs the gamut, I guess I would say. But I could, I can tell you that the kids who are bringing in things that you are thinking on the latter, again, are likely no longer with us.
Okay, thank you.
Member DiZoglio?
Question, when it comes to that, because a parent asked me about weapons too, and they said, could it be defined like a squirt gun? Because the way it looks or something like that could be considered a weapon? Used and be put on as a weapon?
Yes, I'm not sure that we would define something that actually appears to be a weapon as a weapon. That does happen, right? So if it was, appears to look like something that is dangerous and was acted out as it was supposed to be dangerous, but we found out it's not, it's a pretend something, there could still be consequences for that student. Depends how it is used, yep.
Any other questions, comments? Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With those removals from the school system, are we still bound by Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012?
I have to 100% educate them until they are able to get a diploma.
Okay, so I think
When I expel a student.
In terms of public safety, that's something, again, we were talking about them prior meetings. I know the mayor, as a city council at the time, committee is the chairman, we were talking about public safety issues. And that was one of the things that if we make a decision on that, it's, again, it's a very serious decision by backup administration. But the fact that the school system and the pay for those kids to be still educated is an unfunded mandate. So that might be a separate letter to the legislative delegation down the line that A, you have to go through hoops to designate these students. I don't think that's to the safety of the general population. And B, we're going to be paying for these students' education for a long period of time, especially if they're grammar students. And I don't think that's fair to the system unless the state's going to intervene with the financial assistance beyond. And that's not happening. So I know, I had mentioned in prior meetings, and I know we have a letter on the agenda tonight that's separate, and I purposely did it separately. But I think we have to focus as a school committee the items that pertain to unfunded mandates with the state and obligations that we have to do to continue the education of some of these kids. Because someone pays the rules, are entitled to a safe environment, and we should not be burdened with the taxpayers of funding the education of these kids that are removed from for egregious matters and criminal matters. And I've said that repeatedly, and that's the state, not us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we do old business and other pending matters. We need a motion and a second to remove from the table policy regarding the bully prevention and intervention plan.
So moved, second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from Member Willett. Any discussion? Member Shabelia? On page four, Obligations to Notify Others, Section A, Notice to Parents and Guardians. I'd like to propose a friendly amendment in green at the end of that first paragraph. It says, "The process including contact information for the appropriate points of contact." I want to just kind of briefly revisit the intent of that section when I think the subcommittee met along with Ms. Bozak and I think the Superintendent was there. I don't know, this was so long, I don't remember anymore. The intent of that language is to ensure that when a parent reports bullying, they are made aware of the process available to them to file a complaint to a formal investigation. This language as proposed, I think, is a bit vague and allows for too much ambiguity and creativity. So my proposal would be to remove what is in green and replace it with reporting to the district to prompt a full investigation. This information shall include name, email, and phone number to report the bullying complaint to the appropriate party. So that's going to be a motion to amend. Member Shabelia, just mentioned that we have roll calls for everything. Do you have any other amendments that you want to couple with that? Nope. That'll be the one.
A, you have to go through hoops to designate these students. I don't think that's to the safety of the general population. And B, we're gonna be paying for these students' education for a long period of time, especially if they're grammar students. And I don't think that's fair to the system unless the state's gonna intervene with the financial assistance beyond. And that's not happening. So, I know, I mentioned in prior meetings, and I know we have a letter on the agenda tonight that's separate, and I purposely did it separately, but I think we have to focus as a school committee, the items that pertain to unfunded mandates with the state, and obligations that we have to do to continue the education of some of these kids. Because someone pays the rules, are entitled to a safe environment, and we should not be burdened with the taxpayers of funding the education of these kids that are removed from for egregious matters and criminal matters. And I've said that repeatedly, and that's the state, not us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will do old business and other pending matters. We need a motion and a second to remove from the table policy regarding the bully prevention and intervention plan.
So moved, second.
Motion from member Shabilia, the second is from member Willett. Any discussion? Member Shabilia?
On page four, obligations to notify others, section A, notice to parents and guardians. I'd like to propose a friendly amendment in green at the end of that first paragraph. It says, "The process including contact information for the appropriate points of contact." I want to just kind of briefly revisit the intent of that section, when I think the subcommittee met, along with Ms. Bozak and I think the superintendent was there, I don't know, this was so long ago, I don't remember anymore. The intent of that language is to ensure that when a parent reports bullying, they are made aware of the process available to them to file a complaint, a formal investigation. This language as proposed, I think, is a bit vague, and allows for too much ambiguity and creativity. So my proposal would be to remove what is in green and replace it with, "Reporting to the district to prompt a full investigation. This information shall include name, email, and phone number to report the bullying complaint to the appropriate party."
So that's going to be a motion to amend. Member Shabilia just mentioned that we have roll calls for everything. Do you have any other amendments that you want to couple with that?
Nope, that'll be the one.
So, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, member Shabilia, second is from member DiZoglio. We can entertain discussion regarding, if there is any. If not, we'll vote with a roll call on the proposed amendment.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Maxwell? Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The amendment has passed. We now need a motion to approve this item as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabilia, second from the vice chair to adopt as amended. Any further discussion regarding the main item? Member Willett?
Just a commentary, I appreciate the changes that I recommended to the subcommittee and during prior meetings were incorporated in the final product. All the effort, I think it's something that we need to really finalize it tonight to go forward. I know the superintendent gave us assurances that I believe during our January meeting, we're gonna be focused on bullying as a body. And then I know every six months, we will be going in depth with this policy, what is working, what is not working. So I appreciate the incorporation of what I recommended for prior meetings. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, member Maxwell.
I'm, I don't know what's happening, I'm really sorry. I'm trying to say yes every time that I am roll called, but for some reason, my, it's either my Zoom and I can't hear you guys, so I have to take my camera off so I can listen to you, so I'm sorry, I'm out of town, my apologies.
That's fine. And just for clarification, member Maxwell, we're on the item regarding, this is the second read approval for the policy relative to bully prevention and intervention plan?
Yes, I, yes.
Great, just wanted to clarify. If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The measure has been approved as amended. We now need a motion to approve the policy. Oh, you know what, here's something that I think might be an error on the agenda. It's listed twice. I'm firm that that is the only version here, of course, I believe that is, however, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know if we did a motion to remove from the table. Did we do that?
Yeah, it's a motion to remove and a motion to approve.
So, here's the thing, we have- I apologize. So procedurally, I made a mistake just now, and I own that, I apologize. Was tabled, and we had to remove from the table first, before we take the vote.
We can retrace that stuff. I'm gonna do a motion to remove from the table, Mr. Chairman.
Let's do that, okay.
Second?
We have the motion to remove from the table from member Willett, and the second is from member Shabilia. We will have a roll call vote on removing from the table.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes, so the item is removed from the table, and now what we'll do is, and I apologize for this, because it adds extra steps to our meeting, we're gonna have a motion and a second to approve the bullying prevention policy. However, I will ultimately ask for a redo of what's covered procedurally and cleanly. So we need a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabilia, the second from the vice chair. For discussion, I'll invite member Shabilia to propose his amendment.
All right. Page four, motion to remove the language in green and replace with, "Process for reporting to the district to prompt a full investigation. This notification shall include the name, email address, and phone number to report the bullying complaint to the appropriate party."
We need a second?
Second.
So the motion to amend is from member Shabilia, the second is from the vice chair. We've discussed this, we'll proceed to a vote on the amendment.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. So the amendment's been approved, we now need a motion and a second to adopt as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabilia, the second from the vice chair. Discussion? We'll take the vote to adopt as amended.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. It's been, I apologize for the procedural error. We need a motion and a second to remove from the table the whistleblower policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabilia, the second is from the vice chair. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. Item's been removed from the table, we need a motion and a second to approve the whistleblower policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair, second is from member DiZoglio, discussion? Member Shabilia and then member Willett?
So when this was brought forward, two weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever it was, there was a good amount of concern around the reporting procedure, including the distribution list of the school committee, which admittedly was a little hot out the gate. But I didn't have a better solution until I was able to get it to you guys, and we were to be able to have that conversation. That being said, I would like to propose another friendly amendment. In that reporting procedure, replace school committee distribution list with the following individuals: the superintendent, the HR director, the school committee chair slash mayor, vice chair, and others to be deemed appropriate by the superintendent.
Do you have any other proposed amendments, or is that it?
The superintendent, HR director, school committee chair slash mayor, the vice chair, and others to be deemed appropriate by the superintendent.
Is that the only amendment?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have the motion to amend from member Shabilia, the second from the vice chair, discussion regarding the amendment.
Can I add color and context?
Sure.
So the thought and theory behind this is having the, I know the apprehension was having this full school committee on there, but we don't need to be involved in HR issues. However, when you take a step back and you look at it as a legislative body, and I hate to compare us to the clown college in DC, but as a legislative body, we have investigative rights, not to say we're investigating anything, because we certainly are not, but to be included in those distributions as a safety net. I have zero expectation that the mayor, the chair slash mayor or vice chair will have any real involvement in any of these issues, but they are a stopgap, to where if someone comes forward and says, "I brought X to the attention of my principal, or my union rep, or to the superintendent, and all of a sudden, I've been written up three times in the last two weeks, I've been here 15 years, I haven't been written up once." It's that safety net, because now someone outside of the proverbial bubble is involved. And in talking to people when this was in, that provided some comfort to them, not to say that they don't already have comfort from their union, as member DiZoglio stated in the past, or from any of the state agencies that member Willett mentioned in his past comments about this, but it provided what was felt like a security blanket. And if we can give people just a little bit of comfort, why not? Thank you.
Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I appreciate the thought process on this. And the only thing I would add, and we had a separate conversation, member Shabilia and myself, I would like to also include the chairman and the vice chairperson of the city council on the CC list. So we can do that as a separate amendment, and I can offer that, but in the interest of municipal cooperation, we're going through the process of an audit. If there's something that emerges from the school department, I believe as a co-equal branch of government, the city council president and the vice president should be included as part of that process. So I could offer amendment, amendment, and do a roll call vote on that second amendment, but that's my thought process on that. I want to have them included as part of the process, in case something that emerges that the mayor's office will be notified, obviously, the superintendent, HR administrators from the school department, but also the people that finally approved the budget should be looped on any concerns of this nature that arise. So I'd love to have the, that as either incorporate as a further amendment to member Shabilia, or seamlessly have it just offered as a second amendment. I'm game for either, but I think we should have additional safeguards in that. Thank you.
So at this rate, what we'll do is, this is in consideration of the proposed amendment from member Shabilia, so we'll keep discussion in the context of the proposed amendment, and then when we vote on that, assuming it passes, perhaps, we could entertain further discussion regarding the main motion. Do we have any further discussion regarding the proposed amendment?
My proposed amendment, or the proposed one in conjunction with?
That would be a separate.
Yeah. Member DiZoglio, do you have a comment about the proposed amendment?
Yeah, I, I'm in total agreement of that proposal. The thing about the slippery soap of the school committee involved in those type of things, again, as the union reps, in the example that you used when it was rewritten ups in that period, you would file a grievance with your union, because you say, hey, listen, I got an administrator now attacking me after I was a whistleblower. Then eventually, their grievance, if it goes through the superintendent, and the superintendent rejects it, it would go to here for a grievance. That's how it works, the grievance process. Correct? Yeah. So we, that stating that, you're right, as a legislative body, and you see, like, as the example in Washington, when they're doing all those investigations and wasting nine hours, at the end of the day, we, it does come here on those grievances. So, and we ask questions and do those, we had a couple of grievances in the last five. So that would also be part of the process when it comes to that. That's why I stated last time, that we should have the union reps and union presidents as a CC, because eventually, they would file a grievance if that scenario was to hap- Thank you.
Any other discussion regarding the amendment itself?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
So to member DiZoglio's case, I just want to be clear, not all of our employees are represented by a union, and all of the unions have different representatives for their members. So there's not one president for all of the seven unions. And it would be very challenging to have all of them involved in any kind of HR or potential issues, so I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on the amendment first.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The amendment's been approved, we now need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabilia, the second is from member DiZoglio. Further discussion? Member Willett?
I was gonna offer that further amendment, to have CC with the city council chairperson and the city council vice chairperson, just in the interest of municipal cooperation. Again, the audit, in order of transparency and accountability and openness, this also, they ultimately approve our budget. So I would include that as an amendment.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the amendment can't go forward, so we're still on discussion regarding the main motion. Any further discussion? Any other discussion? If not, we'll take the vote.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan? Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
No.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The measure passes, six yes, one no. We are now on to new business. We need a motion and a second to approve the policy relative to public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from member Shabilia, the second is from member DiZoglio. Discussion? Member Shabilia?
I think it's just worth noting, so people are aware, you won't have to say your address at the podium, you will have to write it on the sign-in sheet, and that sign-in sheet is a public document. So if somebody wanted to do a Freedom of Information request and receive that, we would be obligated to hand it over. So while you are not going to have to advertise it, it is still going to be captured. And I think, I just want everyone to be aware, so we can't be, no one's accused of playing hide the address. So I think, I think this is a good step forward, to the concerns from a fair amount of people who are raising this.
Vice Chair?
So, I feel like it's important to know who's speaking and where they're coming from, whether they're a parent, whether they're a teacher, whether they're, how they're related to us. And I think it's important to know that when they get up there and speak. And so while I'm, I guess I'm okay without, with them not saying their address, they need to say something to identify who they are and how they are affiliated with us, whether they're just the general person from some other town, or whether they're a parent of the school, or whether they're a teacher, like, I just wanna, I feel like it's important to know. And so somehow, I feel like we need to capture that, that it has to, they have to state how they're affiliated to the schools. So that's, that's just my feeling.
Any other questions or discussion?
I agree with member Keegan. You know, in this age of, we see what's been happening on Facebook with anonymous posting. I understand some people may feel uncomfortable speaking, but nonetheless, they hear what they do speak, there's other venues, and the right for free speech comes some responsibility, which member Keegan spoke about so eloquently. So that said, I don't feel comfortable with this, unless we have something a little more cleaner, so we could, and also, I think it provides a better understanding for anyone watching about, like, hey, there's someone lives in my neighborhood, maybe that's something I could connect to. So perhaps some sort of amendment? Oh, you have one? You knew this? Okay, thank you.
Member Shabilia?
So with that being said, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to item number two, which reads currently, "Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify him herself by name at the podium, and, and insert after the "and," identify their relationship to the district." That would force a public participant to identify themselves as a parent, a teacher, a community member, press, whatever.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And the address will still be provided?
On the list, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on the proposed amendment?
I apologize, Mayor, I didn't hear who seconded.
So it was a motion from the member Shabilia, and the second was from the vice chair.
Okay, thank you. Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The amendment has been approved, we now need a motion and a second to approve- as amended.
So moved. Second.
Motion from member Shabelia the second is from member DeZoglio any further discussion? If not we'll vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes the measure passes we're on to finance and operations do we have any questions from the committee regarding the expenditure report? Next on the agenda is the revolving funds report any questions from the committee regarding the revolving funds report? Grants any questions from the committee regarding the grants report? Member Shabelia.
Is it possible to flag the grants on here that are federal DOE versus state my concern being if things advertised these DOE grants could disappear?
Yes very easy for us to flag.
Awesome thank you.
We'll just add a column and put.
I mean just put an asterisk next to them.
Yeah we'll just put a column just put like a federal or state next to it yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions move on to student activity accounts any questions or reports? Member DeZoglio.
I'm sorry to go back to the the grants report or the revolving what is grant there's actually a grant here that says FY13 Marsh School PTO Playground $677.89 I just skimmed through it what is that grant?
So it's a great question I do know that there has been there was something that happened previous to me coming in a superintendent that was dedicated to specifically the Marsh Playground but I will definitely look into that Ian would probably know.
Perfect.
Yeah there's a little bit of money left maybe for a slide I know.
Yeah.
Maybe for a new slide.
What is it now two we're down to 229,600 325 dollars ago let's go.
Yeah no I'll check though I'll check the background on that so.
So just because FY13 happened to have been when my son was and he was in preschool that the whole front playground was being redone at that time just left over from that but that happens to coincide when that that whole playground was redone.
Yeah good point.
And the fencing.
I'll check with Ian I I think you're probably right that there was a project and I know the Marsh PTO did a ton of work to help us with with a project again I wasn't superintendent at that time but I'll check with Ian to see if that's sort of a left on that actual project and see if we could buy a step for the slide.
So next we're on to the food services report any questions regarding the food services report? Member Willett?
Again just a common theme of doing a survey with the students or having some type of interaction with the students as in terms of the menu the the monthly report is fantastic I'm not challenging the food service director but at some point they are the customer base and I'm hoping we can do some type of survey to the students it's been a common theme for months again we can work on it through the holidays it's not an urgent matter and I think I've seen fantastic reports make sure that the student population is interviewed in some fashion either through surveys or individual or some type of interaction so that's what I would advocate for thank you.
Vice chair.
I have a question about how they choose which allergies they care about for instance this the the kits that they have the cooking kits that they've got are for celiac disease but what about the kids who are allergic to dairy or other things how come they just pick gluten and why if we're gonna pick one why aren't we and I know it's hard to do all of them but at the same token why are we picking one over another?
So I'm gonna answer vaguely and then I'll check on that for you because I don't want to misspeak but I do know that when we report out lunch menus we report on which ones are eggs or fish or shrimp or like we report on all of those to make sure that we have options for kids but not sure we could do a comprehensive list of every it's just are becoming way more common right it is the dairy it's the eggs I know we and the gluten has become obviously more common but I'll check with Mr. Frady just to make sure that what I just said is closer to accurate and if there's a better answer that he could give.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion if not we'll move on to contract approval we need a motion and a second to approve the snow plowing hauling services for fiscal year 25 contract awarded to Frank DeLucia and Sons Incorporated of Plastow New Hampshire.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair second from member DeZoglio discussion? Member Shabelia.
So I understand that snow plowing is exempt from 30B however 30B is meant to be the minimum not the standard I would like to see this at some point in the spring be bid out for next year because we don't know if we don't know how competitive our rates are we don't know what our options are we don't know what the market is I get that 30B says we don't have to but that doesn't mean we shouldn't just my thought.
Thank you member Shabelia member Willett.
And also in terms of regionalization and aggregate efforts like if we're doing piecemeal the school department has its own plowing service and then the municipality has its own plowing and then we subcontract out on the municipal side maybe look at a common contract with resources out there maybe through a higher threshold as opposed to doing a piecemeal in terms of like if you look at healthcare systems and the aggregate would be the GIC if we're just doing focusing on the school department with plowing services and then municipality and a subcontract out from their end maybe pooling it and putting out to bid that way it's something I agree with member Shabelia that's something that we should be exploring same thing if we did with the transportation system in Methuen something that we should it might come back it's it's something that we're limited in our options but it's something to explore further thank you.
Thank you member Willett any further discussion if not we'll vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes contract is approved notification of appointments and other personnel matters we have none on the agenda other business from the committee member Shabelia we have the policy subcommittee update.
So MASC is waiting on unfortunately me at this point Martha had sent me over I want to say 70% of the policies by letter I don't know if I got them all yet.
You should have received them all I can check and see what I sent only have policies that go through I think it's M.
Okay that that sounds right because I was waiting for N O P Q and the rest of them and they never came so okay so that that helps they are all however in straight PDF so I need to OCR them and get them over to the MASC rep who's going to start the review on those my goal is to get that done hopefully by week and let them hit the ground running I don't know it'll it'll the delay will be on their end come Monday not my end.
Thank you member Shabelia at this point we have you listed to give an update regarding the audit however I have information if you would like for me to pin you for you.
Yeah I defer to you.
So regarding the audit just to preface what I'm about to say we have free cash city Methuen which is designated for one-time non-recurring expenditures and and a good example of that is the funds to pay for a whole piece of the Methuen Public Schools audit I along with the CAFO proposed to the city council at the last regular meeting a resolution to withdraw the amount required to fund the contract from free cash pending the state certification of free cash which we expect in the coming week or so around mid-December timeframe so that was approved on a first read the second read would be this coming Monday the 16th so upon approval of that resolution we have the funding source in place for the audit contract and also on the December 16th city have the actual contract presented to the council for their consideration so at this point we have halfway there to the funding source a procedural contract inside of the next week any further updates from you member Shabelia?
Nothing.
Any questions discussion all right move on member Willett we have the item here relative to the letter to the Methuen Legislative Delegation.
Thank you Mr. Chairman and this is similar to a letter that we had submitted in the past and I always preface by saying that in partnership with the legislative delegation they're part of a 200-member body if you're in the Senate and obviously the governor has the first crack at the budget happens before we go into our budget cycle we usually have something almost predetermined with a consensus on the inflationary figure and I think the Massachusetts Association of School Committees had very somber message that the inflationary rate was once again going to be below 2% which is outrageous 2% would be below the COLA for social security recipients below the current consumer price index and below the cost factor for many many people in terms of their heating for if they use oil and natural gas we in prior years were at the threshold of 4.5% in two prior fiscal years and unfortunately it went down to 1.35% and that resulted in a range of four to five million dollars that were reduced in terms of expected chapter 70 growth that's not sustainable as a school system so to go ahead the curve and again the elections are resolved at the state house and we have the same partners I also want to commend Representative Ryan Hamilton and member Shabelia for doing a listening tour at the Nevins Library I want this to be a positive outreach to the legislative delegation but there's really three that I've been talking about since I was sworn in in January one is the unfunded educational mandates we're drowning in red tape and paperwork and unfunded mandates the secretaries maxed to the limit we have very limited administrators because of budget cutbacks and we need to take a deep dive into unfunded mandates that are being imposed upon local communities and school districts the other factor is we've had an influx of extraordinary cases with special education there's a senator who served on his community's school committee he served as the president of the association for the school committees and then he was a colleague of mine at the state house and and then subsequent to that he was elected as a senator outright and he is filing legislation and I know he'll file it again it will increase the circuit breaker reimbursement rate from 75% to 90% which I think is key it should match the child and also just again anything that we can do I know our colleague from the Haville School Committee wants to do a look back period of three to four years of having an inflation average to take into account that I think it was 2022 or 2023 we had a high watermark of inflation of 9.1% and we are making headway in terms of that but if you look at the cumulative of the last four years we're well over 20% of inflation and if you go into the next fiscal year at a rate of 1.35% we will be damaged as a school district unfortunately we had to increase we had the lowest threshold of a student to teacher ratio ever in Methuen that was 20 students on average per teacher for the the regular education unfortunately because of the cutbacks from the governor we had to increase it by 25% we've been constantly through the years we've it's been a waiting game on the circuit breaker and then I think over time the paperwork chase and unfunded mandates and drowning in red tape all those factors are not sustainable so again I would encourage my colleagues if they had any questions about the letter but I think it's a positive constructive informative letter and we have to be ahead of the curve because in January people will be cosponsoring or filing legislation the governor soon after will be filing her budget be a consensus and we have to and I told everybody affiliated with the Methuen Public Schools whether it be a parent a teacher an employee elected officials we have to marshal our resources to the Student Opportunity Act again that was a God sent I appreciate that that helped us and it kept in with the spirit of the Education Reform Act because back in 1993 there was a massive disparity between communities like Methuen and Haville versus Andover and North Andover so the Education Reform Act was increased the scores for the minority students we're number one in the nation with the MCAS testing unfortunately the voters made a decision on that but we're still ranked number one and then also I think it's very important for us at the local level to reinforce to the state that it's a balancing act in terms of funding so I just want to offer that to the membership thank you.
Thank you member Willett next we have any other business from the committee and I'm going to exclude anything relative to the collective bargaining process.
What do we do with the letter?
It's not on well it's not on the agenda as I have it down as a discussion point it's not under new business.
Oh okay.
But perhaps I mean if it's something that we want to add to the next agenda under new business we certainly could do that.
I mean I still think we have time in in January concerns but we'll put I mean whatever we want to do as a membership we could send a letter or if we want to put it as a new business item it's up to the membership.
Okay any other business from the committee member DeZoglio.
Yep thank you Mr. Chair I just want to wish my constituents and celebrate Hanukkah Kwanzaa happy holidays.
Business if not at this point I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Shabelia second from member DeZoglio roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes the time is 7:43 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas Methuen. Merry Christmas, Methuen.